We are on item eight E. And we're going to hear from the superintendent's search firm presentation for the Michigan Association of School Boards, and we have Jay Bennett presenting for us today.
Well, good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Thank you for having me out. My name is Jay Bennett. I'm the Assistant Director for Executive Search Services at the Michigan Association of School Boards. And just a little bit about me, I am a former board member, having served on my local board and my RISA board in the greater Lansing area, so I've been right where you are right now. I'm a lifetime educator, started out my career as a middle school and high school special education teacher, eventually started getting into online education, and then started working with board members, and eventually then started working with the association. So I've been doing searches now for the association full-time for about the past five years, and then as a consultant about two or three years before that. So over about the past eight years, I have conducted over thirty-five or so searches across the state of Michigan, working in districts in Oakland County like Wald Lake, working in districts in urban areas like the Lansing School District, and working with districts in small rural towns like Bellevue, Michigan, if any of you know where that is, between, kind of between Charlotte and Battle Creek in Eaton County. So I've been around the state doing searches for about the past eight years or so. So that's a little bit about me and where I come at this from. So MASP is your organization. We will provide you with unparalleled support. I have consultants across the state that are currently doing searches. We have our full office staff that supports us, public relations, digital, and photography. We have our two, excuse me, our two excellent lawyers in Brad Benasik and our newest lawyer, Dan Feinberg, and they're just top-notch, Open Meetings Act, everything related to school law, and so we've got that support as well. We've done over seven hundred successful searches. We have a track record of success. We have close working relationships with all the other education associations. The Superintendent's Association is right across the hall from us. We do regular presentations with their aspiring superintendents, so their Horizons Academy is an administrator training program that MASA has, and we give regular presentations to those groups. So I know all the applicants that are coming up through that program there. We strive for a high degree of process transparency throughout this entire search, okay? I am not going to take you into a closed session to discuss anything related in this search unless I absolutely possibly have to. And for the most part, the only two reasons I'm going to consider taking you into closed session, if we have a high number of internal applicants, and I think that discussing them in an open meeting is going to run the risk of outing them as candidates or infringing upon their privacy, then I will take you in a closed session to discuss those internal candidates only. If you, as a board, decide that you want to engage in any kind of behavioral testing of the applicants, we can discuss the results of those behavioral tests in a closed session as well. Other than that, we're doing everything in open session. So discussion of applicants all happens in open session. All the applicants are assigned a random number, and we talk about the applicants' numbers. So I'd like to talk about applicant number five. These are the things that I like, these are the things that I don't like, this is what I think about applicant five. So we will talk about those applicants as numbers in an open session. I've done this many times, and we don't run the risk of outing them as candidates or violating their privacy at all, and we can do that all in an open meeting. Anytime we're going through this, please jump in with any questions you may have. Last thing here is what I think sets us apart from all of our competitors here. We have an application program that is something that was created by the Ohio School Boards Association. It is used by about seventeen or eighteen other school board associations across the country. As soon as we post it in our system, it automatically goes out to those other seventeen or so districts, or I'm sorry, states. And conveniently enough for us, Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin, Minnesota are all part of that consortium, so they all use that program as well. In addition to Nebraska, Kansas, Alaska, Florida, I think North Carolina, then there might be a couple other southern states. But that is to say that that is part of our program, there's no extra cost for that. But as soon as I set that out there, it goes out to those other national organizations. So if I start getting applicants from Alaska, I have a pretty good idea of how we got those, okay? So as your association, we exist solely to serve boards of education. We're committed to helping you find the appropriate candidate with a focus on longevity. We have no obligation to place candidates, and we are ever mindful of the laws and public perception. We have a no-surprise guarantee, so that means candidate backgrounds, communications with stakeholders. If I hear about it, you're going to hear about it, okay? And that works both ways. If you hear about it, I want you to make sure that you communicate it to me as well. When we release the names of the applicants that you've called in for interviews, you will get phone calls, you will get emails, you will get shout-outs at the local restaurant about, hey, I know someone who knows someone who knows this candidate, and I think they're fantastic, you really need to take a good look at them. You'll also hear, hey, I know somebody who knows somebody who knows that candidate, and I can't imagine why in the world you would ever think that they'd make a good superintendent here in Bloomfield Hills. You're going to get that feedback. And all I ask is that if you hear something that alarms you, that you communicate that back to me so that I can then vet that out and try to find out if there is any legitimacy to that, because I've run into too many occasions where somebody with a particular ax to grind will float the board something that they know, which turns out to be completely false. And so I always want to try my best to vet those things out before you, as a board, consider that to be a relevant piece of information as it relates to that applicant. Quality of the candidate pool. If you don't get the pool that you want, we'll go back out and do it again. We're going to do this till we get this right. No additional charge for that. That's all part of the package, okay? Minimum of one-year tenure. If you don't get that one-year tenure out of that candidate, then we're going to come back and do that search for free plus expenses. And we're not going to actively recruit any superintendent that we've placed for at least three years. So if we're fortunate enough to get this search, any candidate that our association has placed within the past three years, we are not going to actively recruit for this position. Now, if they call me and tell me that they're interested in applying, there's nothing that I can do to stop them from applying, but I'm not going to actively recruit them. And I'm going to have a conversation with that board president if it comes up that, hey, I didn't call them, they called me.
When you say you're not going to actively recruit them, but since it's a search and it's out there, they still will have that option?
They could still apply for it, absolutely, absolutely. But if they've only been in that position for, you know, one, two, maybe three years, and they're already looking to get out, I'm not sure what that says about where they currently are, or maybe that this is such an attractive position that they really want to take an opportunity for it, who's to say? But just something to consider as well, okay? But that is our promise. It not only benefits those districts that we've worked with, but it benefits you as well. You know that if we get this opportunity to work with you, I'm not coming back here in two years trying to take your superintendent to go somewhere else, okay?
And I guess too, with the three-year, and I'm just gauging, your typical time period a superintendent typically stays in a role is what, three to four years?
Yeah, it's three to five years in our urban and suburban districts, five to seven in our rural districts across the state. You know, we are very proud of our placement rate in that, you know, a vast majority of the superintendents that we've placed in the past five years are still currently working in the district that we placed them in. You know, there are a few exceptions. You know, these past five years, in case you hadn't noticed, have been a little bit wonky. And so we have had some instances where some superintendents have not been successful in their placements, but a vast majority of the superintendents we've placed in the past five years are currently still with the district that we placed them with. We know that selecting a superintendent is one of the most important decisions that a board of education will make. We know that effective, high-functioning boards have a better outcome related to the search, and we know that the clearer the picture of the type of leader that you're looking for, the easier it is for us to find them. We're talking about around a thirteen-week process. In the folder that I handed out to you ahead of time, on the right side of the folder is a mocked-up timeline. And so this is something that I threw together based on your current board meeting schedule. I tried my best to kind of work with what I saw posted for your regular meeting schedule just because I know you're already meeting that night. And so if we can tack on some additional things related to the search, that's good for you, that's good for the community, they were already expecting you to meet that night. So to the best of my ability, I did that, also working off of the fact that your current superintendent is slated to retire effective July 31st, I believe, and so looking for an August 1 start. That was kind of where I did this, and then also taking into account that the month of July can be rather troublesome for the organization of trying to get everybody together. This is not set in stone. This is just kind of a draft, just to kind of give you an idea of what a timeline's going to look like if you're looking for that. If you, as a board, decide that we need to blow that out and expand that a little bit, that's perfectly fine. If you, as a board, think that we need to contract that, I would caution you that that probably would not be advisable. As it stands right here, this job will be posted for about five weeks under this model, which is, you know, four to six is ideal. I don't want to do it less than four, I don't want to do it more than six. So five is kind of that sweet spot, but there is a little room for movement one way or the other on here if you decided that that timeline didn't work for you. So establishing the search timeline, stakeholder engagement. So stakeholder engagement is a very important part of this process, okay? And we do that in a couple of ways. Again, in this folder, on the right side there, the third one back, is an example of our survey that we would put out in the field. This is a paper copy of the electronic survey that we would put on the field. That electronic survey, I can put that electronic survey out in the field immediately, and I can put it out in probably just about any language that you would need. We have a robust survey system that allows me to upload just about any language that is available. We've done this in Mandarin, we've done this in Arabic, we've done this in Spanish and French. So if you have a language or a specific language that you would like to make sure we have the survey available in, you just let me know what that is, and I will upload the appropriate file into the survey system, and then it will default to, there's a dropdown list, and so they just select their language from the dropdown list, and then the survey comes through in that particular language. So you would just need to let me know what languages you'd like. In addition to the survey, we're going to do face-to-face meetings. And I'm going to do as many face-to-face meetings as you, as a board, feel are appropriate, and I'm going to meet with whatever groups you think, as a board, are appropriate. Now, generally speaking, that's going to be administrators, teachers, staff, community members, parents, students, and then any other particular groups. If you want me to meet with the local Kiwanis Club, I'll meet with the local Kiwanis Club. If you want me to meet with your union leaders, I'll meet with your union leaders. So whoever you want me to meet with, we'll set that up, okay? We try our best to set as many of these meetings on, you know, one or two days, or three days, or four days, or whatever it is, to maximize my time in district, to minimize your costs as well. You know, coming down from Lansing is not a, you know, it's not a great distance, but every time I come down, that does add up to the mileage, and so we're just trying to maximize that to the best of our ability. You will get a, if I was to guess, I would suspect that you're probably going to get a number of responses to the online survey. I think that's where you're going to get a vast majority of your information is going to be in that online survey, but we don't want to not do the face-to-face meetings as well, okay? We'll help you in developing a compensation range. So again, on the right side of the folder is a salary comparison, so I pulled some competitive districts. I believe most of those, if not all of those, are in Oakland County, just to kind of give you an idea as to what is being paid with these other superintendents, these areas, and this is just going to help us set that salary schedule. I want that salary schedule, in order for you to get the best candidates, it needs to be competitive. If you set it too low, you're not going to get the candidates you want. If you set it too high, you're going to get candidates that, again, you probably don't want. And so we've got to kind of find that sweet spot so that you are guaranteed, or at least have a reasonable assumption that you're going to get the types of candidates that are serious about being the next superintendent here in Bloomfield Hills. We're going to want to publish that preliminary posting as soon as we can, just to kind of get it out there, to let people know that it's out there. One of the reasons that we post this for four to five weeks, it's not only to give us opportunity to recruit, but a bigger part of it is, honestly, is to give them a time to prepare their materials. A lot of these applicants have not applied for a superintendency in a long time, or not applied for a job in a long time, so they need to brush up on their resume, they need to brush up on their cover letter, they need to get updated letters of reference. I don't think any of you want to see letters of reference from fifteen years ago, right? So they need to get their materials in order, and so it's going to take them some time to get them in order. So that's one of the reasons that we want to put it out there as soon as we can, to give them as much opportunity as possible. A vast majority of these applications are going to come in in the last week or two that that posting is out there. And so boards will be, you know, you'll be asking me, so, you know, a week in, how many applicants? A week in, probably none. Two weeks in, how many applicants? I mean, I don't know, maybe four. And then you'll start to get worried. It's like, no, it's okay. A vast majority of these applicants are going to come in in the last week or two, easy. In fact, if we generally close our postings on Tuesdays at four o'clock, and one of the reasons for that is because I'm going to get somebody that's going to call me at 4:01 and say, I spent the last fifteen minutes trying to upload my materials, and I had a glitch and my computer reset. Okay, now I have time, because it's four o'clock on a Tuesday. I have time to get your materials in there, to help you out, to make sure that all those application materials are in there, and then I can present all those application materials to the board. So one of the things we want to make sure that we talk about are the things that you are most proud of in your district. This is just a quick example of some ideas that we could talk about, and where do we put those? Well, we put together a customized digital brochure. Now, this is one from a search that we did many years ago in Elk Rapids. Yours would have yours, you know, your colors and your logo, and then your district information. We would include your points of pride, whatever it is that the board thinks is most important to put out there. This is a brochure, a digital brochure, that is attached to the job posting. It's something that you can attach to your website, that you can put out on your Facebook page, to encourage people to apply, to show the community what it is that you're looking for in your next superintendent. We can take all the material from that selection criteria that we gathered through the survey and through our face-to-face meetings, and make sure that all gets in here as well. We just find that this is something that's very popular, and again, this is all part of the process, all part of the package. If this is what you'd like to add, we can take the time to do this. It doesn't take a lot of time for us to turn this around. You give us some pictures from the district, we include those in here, and we can usually have this turned around in a matter of days and then added to that posting. So we talked already a little bit about the stakeholder engagement. We talked about the online survey, the face-to-face focus groups, feedback forms. After every interview that you conduct, you will have an opportunity, we will pass out forms to everybody here in the audience. They will then be able to note on those forms the things that they heard that they liked, the things that they heard that they were not all that crazy about. All of those go back to the board for your perusal, okay? If you want to, although I advise against it, if you want to, we can open up that survey to anybody that is viewing the meeting. The problem, though, is that that opens it up to anybody that's viewing the meeting. And so you will get survey responses from people that have no stake in your community. You will get more input than you probably ever want to look at, and not a vast majority of it, but at least, you know, a good percentage of it may not be from people in your community, and you're not going to know who it's coming from because it's completely online. At least when you get it from the people that are here, you know that they're the people that came to the meeting. Now, again, you can't guarantee that the people here at the meeting are people from your community, but I think it's a pretty reasonable guess that they are, okay? All right. So after the second round of interviews, again, an opportunity for those feedback forms, and then also an opportunity for those members of the community to submit questions. So we have a little form they can fill out, they can submit those questions. I would then present those questions to the board president, and depending on how much time we have in that second round of interviews, the board president could read through some of those questions from the community. Now, obviously, if you have a full house and you get thirty questions from the community, we're not going to be able to get through all of those, but the board president can, you know, kind of thumb through those and pick out a couple of questions that she thinks are relevant, and then ask those of the applicants. So that's another opportunity for some feedback from your community. Recruitment. So we talked about the in-state marketing. You know, we put it on our website, we put it on my staff, which is the statewide website where every education job in the state of Michigan is posted. We encourage you to create a separate page on your website dedicated to superintendent search, and on that webpage on your site is where you're going to put all the meeting notices, that's where you're going to put the links to the job posting, that's where you're going to put the links to the online survey. So it's a one-stop shop. So anyone in your community that goes to your webpage can go to that superintendent search webpage and get an update as to where we are in the search process, and then get all the relevant meeting times, meeting locations, web links, all that kind of stuff. Recommendations from board members. If you, as a board member, know somebody that you would like me to reach out to, just give me a name and some contact information if you have it, and I will reach out to that person and say, hey, you know, I've got some board members here that would love to see you in the applicant pool. I don't want you to reach out to them directly, because any interaction that a board member has with a applicant can be construed as an interview, and because all interviews need to happen in an open session, you would be violating the Open Meetings Act. So work through your consultant. If you have somebody that you'd like me to call and reach out to, I'd be more than happy to do that. I will encourage staff to do the same. If the staff are like, hey, there's this building principal that was here years ago, they went on to be a superintendent somewhere else, we think they'd be a fabulous person to come back to Bloomfield Hills, I'll reach out to them and let them know that there's been some staff that think that you should throw your hat in the ring, okay? National marketing. So we already talked a little bit about our application system. On the search, in the search proposal, if you turn to page eight, under fees, you will see that the fee for this search is ninety-five hundred dollars. You'll see that we have some prices there for some of those assessments that we talked about, so the behavioral assessment, and then that's the DISC, and then we also have the superintendent achiever assessment, that's a more stringent behavioral test. We talk about then EdWeek, Top School Jobs, four hundred and ninety-five dollars for a thirty-day online posting, School Superintendent's Association, that's the nationwide association, five hundred and fifty-nine. These last two bullet points, these are two associations that have their own job boards, and these are the two associations that I've seen the most impact from, and that's the National Alliance of Black School Educators and the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Those two job boards have produced applicants for my pools. And I know that because when I see those out-of-state applicants come into our pools, I reach out to them, have a conversation with them, one of the first things I ask them is, well, where did you see this posting? And I've had them tell me they saw it on those two websites. So I know those two are effective. The other ones are the EdWeek, the Top School Jobs, the School Superintendent's Association. I don't know that those have produced a lot of applicants, but if that is something that the board wants to pursue, then we can definitely advertise in those places. None of this happens without board approval, okay? So I'm going to make sure that the board knows exactly how much all of this is going to cost them, and make sure that you're okay with those costs before we move forward with that, okay? Anything above and beyond the ninety-five hundred and expenses is going to go to the board for approval, okay? Expenses are going to be kept to the minimum. It's my travel time, or my travel, I'm sorry, my travel mileage from Lansing to here, and then, you know, I do like to eat a little bit, but I'll be, I'll keep that, you know, I'll keep it reasonable. So if I'm here all day, then, you know, I may sneak a meal or two in there, but it's all going to be reasonable. And the expenses, again, are mostly going to be my travel, but coming from Lansing won't be too much, all right? So we talked about the REBELIS, we talked about the national, so the national affiliation of superintendent searchers, so those are the other state associations that do search, and I'm in constant contact, especially with those that border us, so Indiana, Ohio, Minnesota, Wisconsin. I'm in constant contact with those people in those states that do my job in their state. If I see applicants coming in from those states, I will definitely reach out to them and see if they have any insight into those applicants. I can tell you that a vast majority of the applicants that we're seeing in pools across the state of Michigan are primarily from Michigan. If we see out-of-state applicants, it's usually in those districts that are bordering on the south, so those districts that border Indiana, Ohio. We just did a district in Edwardsburg. If any of you know where Edwardsburg is, it's practically a suburb of South Bend, Indiana. So that pool had about half Indiana applicants and half Michigan applicants, and that's only because of their proximity to Indiana. In the UP, we have some districts that are close to Wisconsin, so we will occasionally get some Wisconsin applicants in some of those UP pools, but a vast majority of our applicants are either currently in Michigan or have some sort of connection to Michigan that they're looking to reconnect. So maybe they have aging parents in Michigan that they're looking to move back to get closer to, they've got grandkids, they've got a kid at MSU or U of M or Western or something like that, and they're looking to get back into Michigan to be closer to family. So those are some of the reasons that we see those out-of-state applicants, but for a vast majority of our positions, we're looking at in-state applicants. So during this recruitment process, we're going to vet those applicants, we're going to review those materials. I'll have phone calls with everybody that shows an interest in this job, in addition to the, you know, active recruiting that I will do as well. I'll make some discreet inquiries of my fellow search consultants and of some superintendents that I'm currently working with, and see if they have any ideas for who might be some that'd be interested in this opportunity. The interview process. So again, we'll work with the board to do that selection of candidates, we'll make sure that we're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. We believe in this process unfolding in public. You will get access to all of the applicant materials. So if we get twenty-five applicants that have successfully submitted an application, and by successfully submitting an application, that means that they've gotten into our system, they have uploaded their resume, a cover letter, three letters of recommendation, and then answered our approximately fifteen application questions. If they've uploaded all that information and hit submit, they become an applicant. We then give you passwords into the system. You only see the applicants from Bloomfield Hills, but you will see every applicant and all of their materials, okay? So you have access to all of that information. We then discuss those candidates, as we talked about, by number, not by name. Once they have accepted an interview, that's going to happen in the public meeting, so at that point, we issue the press release and say, okay, here we go, these are the applicants that we're going to interview. Could be four, could be five, could be six, could be seven. You know, it's going to be up to the board to determine who they want to bring back, you know, or bring in for those first-round interviews. I will send you a list of the applicants, broken into two tiers. There will be a top tier and a bottom tier. That top tier will be those applicants that most closely match what it is that you say you're looking for in your selection criteria. The bottom tier will be those candidates that do not match. But again, anybody in that list is somebody that you, as a board, could interview. It's going to be up to you, as a board, to determine who you want to interview. This is your process that I'm here to help facilitate and lead you through, but I'm not going to dictate who you should and should not interview. That's completely up to you, as a board. So we talked a little bit about those first-round interviews. We try to keep those as identical to each other as possible, because I want there to be an even playing ground, so we're going to ask the same questions of all those candidates, and we're going to give them all the same amount of time in which to answer those questions. Now, every now and again, I get a board that pushes back a little bit, and they want to ask, you know, some thought-provoking questions, like, you know, what books are you currently reading, or who would you like to have dinner with, living or dead? I try to discourage boards from that. I want to stick to behavior-based questions, because we know that the best indicator as to whether or not somebody's going to be successful as a superintendent in your district, if they've been successful in their past experiences, they're more likely to be successful in their future experiences. So what do we want to know? Well, we want to know, what's your experience with school finance and budgeting? What's your experience with contract negotiations? What's your experience with K-12 curriculum? What's your experience with disciplining of employees? Those are the kinds of things that we want to know from these candidates. So have they seen these questions in other interviews before? Yep, probably, especially because your interviews, I know, if, I'm assuming anyway, that your interviews are going to be broadcast, just like you broadcast your meeting tonight. So can the applicants from the first night, or the second night, watch the interviews from the first night? Yep. That's what we have to deal with when we do these things in open session. So we're not trying to surprise or trick any of our applicants during this process. That's not going to get us what we need to know. So I don't want you to worry too much about the questions being out there. In fact, I would almost encourage, in fact, I will encourage you to seriously think about providing the applicants for that first round with the questions ahead of time. So they have them to look over, so that when they get here for that interview, they're prepared. I want them to be prepared for you, because I want you to hear about how they've been successful. I want you to hear good examples of things that they've done in the past that are going to translate to them being an effective superintendent here in Bloomfield Hills. There are some decisions that a superintendent has to make relatively quickly, but thankfully, most decisions that a superintendent has to make are something that they can think on, right? And so I don't know that thinking on their feet during an interview tells us a whole lot about their thought process, because again, there's very few things that they have to make a quick decision on as a superintendent. There are occasions, for sure, but most of what they have, they have some time to kind of think and consider and thoughtfully reflect, and so I think it's important that they have that opportunity with questions. But if you, as a board, do not want to share the questions ahead of time, that is your choice as well, but I'm here to tell you that they have a pretty good idea of what's coming at them. They've either been in an interview similar to this before, or they've done their research. They filed those recorded interviews on the web, and they watched them, and they've listened to the questions, and they said, boy, it seems like they're getting a lot of the same questions about curriculum and budget and finance and disciplining employees and contract negotiations. Well, yeah, because these are the things that are expected of a superintendent. We need to know how they're going to do those things. Okay, second round. Now, this is an opportunity for you to really kind of get in and dig in with those applicants, Now, this is an opportunity for you to really kind of get in and dig in with those applicants, ask them follow-up questions. Hey, we heard in the first round about this program that you talked about, tell us more about that. Okay? Between the first and second round, I will encourage you, as board members, to take part in the reference checking process. So I will assign you some references that these applicants have submitted, and you will make some phone calls between those first and second round interviews, and then at the end of those second round interviews, you'll kind of report out to the board about what you heard when you did those reference checks. We can talk about having those public meet and greets. So if we do the interviews on a Tuesday, if we start the first one at 6:00 and the second one at 7:30, then from 4:30 to 5:30, we could have the applicants here in a couple different classrooms, and then have people from the community come in and meet with them and talk to them and hear from them. And even if they're available, then, you know, previous to that, we could even have them take a tour of the district, not with any of you, as board members, because remember, no interaction between board members and applicants, but, you know, we could find some administrators that would be happy, or maybe even some students, that would be happy to take them around the district and show them off, and show the district off. Okay? We could talk about a presentation, if that's something that the board desires to see during that second round, if you'd like to see them give a presentation. I caution you that if you have them give a presentation, I don't want you to get too hung up on the presentation itself, more about how they present the information to you, as a board, because that's what you're looking for. Unfortunately, they're generally putting these presentations together in a fairly short amount of time, and so, you know, if a misspelling or something slips through in their, you know, two-day preparation of this slide deck, I don't want you to get too hung up on that. I want you to focus in on how they are communicating to you, as a board, because that's the important part, right? They're going to have time, usually, more time than just a day or two, to put together presentations for the board. But in this case, if we notify them on Wednesday night that, hey, next Tuesday, I need you to have a presentation together, ready to go for the board, remember that they are probably working in a full-time job, as it is, and so they're not going to have a lot of time to sit down and put together a comprehensive PowerPoint. So I don't want you to get too hung up on that. Focus more on the content that they're talking about and how they present it to you, not so much on the presentation. So then eventually, it comes down to that moment where you put forth that action item to enter into negotiations with candidate X, and then we have a second, have discussion, and then take that vote, and if the vote is a majority to enter in negotiations, then generally, a small contingent of the board will start that negotiation process with that applicant, and then that full contract needs to come back to the board for formal adoption. Support. So as your association, we are here with you before the search, during the search, and after the search. And that's even if you decide to go with one of the other firms. That's fine. Okay? I have a cadre of retired superintendents across the state that this fall will meet with every newly-placed superintendent across the state, regardless of who put them there, whether it was an MLI search, or an HYA search, or a Rain Associates, or an MASB, even if they hired, the board did the search themselves, or if they just promoted their deputy into the superintendency. Doesn't matter. Every new superintendent in the fall will get a visit from one of my retired superintendents to offer mentoring, to offer services that we, as a association, can help them with, with their board. For you, if you decide to go with MASB, we would offer you a price break on that first facilitated evaluation. I know that several of you have been part of that facilitated evaluation process in the past. We highly recommend this for a first-time superintendent in a district, that you consider that facilitated evaluation, and that is something that we would provide you a price break on. So those are the things that I wanted to talk about tonight. Questions, concerns?
Okay. We'll start with Trustee Noble.
Draft updates, I mean, you know, whatever.
Trustee Noble.
I don't have any questions right now.
No?
Thank you.
Trustee Colan.
Yes, you mentioned, and I know Trustee Hill brought this up, you know, earlier, about national search. It's only prevalent, you know, when you're living in sort of the middle of two states, but I think we're different. I think we, as, like, there's very few communities in this country that have the name Orange County, Bloomfield, Greenwich. I'm just saying. So I think, so what is your national search strategy to try to recruit?
Yeah.
And maybe people won't apply, but try to recruit because we are a destination district.
Sure. So one of the first ones is advertising similar spaces that we talked about, and that's to get it out there nationally, get it out to those organizations. I was also fortunate enough, I just participated in a webinar with Howard University and their aspiring superintendents. And so they have a cadre of aspiring superintendents, I've got their mailing list, and I would immediately reach out to some of those candidates that have shown an interest in possibly working in Michigan, and I may even reach out to some of those that didn't, if I think that they might be someone that you, as a board, would be interested in. I will work with my fellow state consultants to see, you know, who's in their searches. And, you know, as part of my day-to-day, I monitor everything going on as it relates to superintendent search in Michigan and across the country. I have Google Alerts set up for superintendent search, and so I know what's happening with the Memphis, Tennessee, search right now, and all the dirty details of that, and if you want to talk about that, I could tell you about that. I know what's happening in Oshkosh, I know what's happening in Kalamazoo, right? And so I monitor all those searches. So I'm going to reach out to those applicants that have been there. Part of the nice thing about our system is that if they currently have an application in our system, so meaning that they've applied for another job here in Michigan, I can send out invites directly to them, to their email, that says, hey, this is an opportunity, please apply, and because they've already got their materials in my system, it takes them no time to apply for this position. And based on us just having conducted the Wall Lake search, I can think of several candidates in that Wall Lake search that I think would be excellent candidates for your application pool, I'll encourage them to apply. Again, making no promises, just saying that, hey, this is what Bloomfield Hills is looking for, based on our conversations in the past, based on what I know about you, I think you might be an applicant that would be of interest to them, so I'm going to encourage you to apply. And that's all I'm doing, is encouraging people to apply. I make no promises. I'm not going to say, you know what, I think you're going to be the next superintendent of Bloomfield Hills. That's not my position. All right? That's a board decision. I'm just here to try to bring you as, you know, a candidate pool that most closely matches what it is that you say that you're looking for.
And then second, you know, going through the process and hearing, you know, other firms' process, so is it your process, meaning that you send us the applicants and we narrow it down, or is it your process to, you know, sort of give us your buckets, narrow down, and then we, from there, decide?
Yeah. So the posting closes on a Tuesday. By the end of that week, usually on Thursday or Friday, you will have access to all of the applicants. And then generally speaking about, usually around a week following that, is when we'll sit down as a group, and you, as a board, will let me know which applicants in that list are the ones that you would like to call for interviews. Generally speaking, most boards that I work with coalesce around the same four or five applicants right off the get, and then usually it's that sixth and seventh and eighth applicant, where it's like, three of us are kind of on board, four of us are kind of like, well, we're not quite sure, and then we can kind of talk about it a little bit, and then those four board members here with those three like about that applicant, they're like, yeah, okay, I can get behind that, and so, oh, hey, look, now we've got candidate number five. All right, what about candidate number six? And we can talk about that a little bit, and then, hey, look, we've got candidate number six. All right, are we happy with all these six? Yes? Okay, let's go forth and put forth those phone calls and get them in here for interviews. So you'll get all those materials, usually about a week before we sit down and have that opportunity to discuss who it is that you want to call forth for your interviews.
I actually have a question about...
What?
Are you going to ask? Any?
No, 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 I was saying, I'm done.
Okay. Trustee.
Thank you, Jay. That was...
Absolutely.
You answer all my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay.
Yeah. Trustee Hill?
Yes, thank you. In terms of candidates with a non-traditional education background, how many of those is the MSB sourcing for other schools?
Yeah. So depending on how you write your selection criteria, that's going to kind of guide as to whether or not you're looking for the traditional, non-traditional. It has been my experience that a vast majority of not, just about every board that I've worked with, is usually looking for someone that has that, what we would consider to be traditional K-12 experience. They've been a teacher, they've been a building administrator, they've been a central office administrator, now they're looking to be a superintendent. Every now and again, we'll get somebody that has come up through maybe the finance ranks, so they started as a finance clerk, and then eventually became the finance director, and then they became the deputy superintendent. They've never had that traditional K-12 teaching experience, but they've had plenty of K-12 administrative experience. And so I've seen people from that realm kind of end up in the superintendency. I've seen people come up through the operations side. Every now and again, a non-traditional, usually even my non-traditionals are, tend to be, they're non-traditional in that they don't have that K-12 experience, but they have post-secondary experience. So college, community college, administration experience, but not necessarily in K-12. It's very rare, and I can't really think of a one right off the top of my head, in which a non-traditional candidate, someone that has no education administrative experience, has been hired by a board. That's not to say that I don't occasionally get some of those applicants in my pools, but for the most part, boards have not been interested in interviewing those applicants.
I apologize, we've seen three proposals today, so I...
I get it. I get it. No worries.
That fee you listed does include the national search. Is that correct?
So that fee includes the national search in such that it's going to go into our application system, which is going to go out to those about 17 or 18 other states that we talked about. But if we want to add those national advertising, that's on the page there, and so we'll talk about which of those national advertisements you'd like to do, and then we'll be above and beyond that. So it'll all be the costs that's listed in there, I think $495 for some, $295 for the others, so whichever ones you want to list it with.
So it all comes in the form of advertising, not actually going out and headhunting?
So as far as going out and doing the recruiting, so based on the contacts that I have with my other state associations, based on some, you know, digging, I mean, I'll do some hardcore Google searches to find out applicants in other searches. I've got contacts on LinkedIn from across the country that I'll reach out to and see if they, you know, if they'll be interested. If we look to competitive searches, so right now, in this area, there are no other searches that I would consider to be a direct competitor to you as far as, you know, similarity, right? There is one other district in the state that will be looking for a superintendent in the not-too-distant future. They could end up on a trajectory similar to yours. They're located outside of Grand Rapids, and that's Forest Hills. So Forest Hills is a district of about $9,500, but they're a similar district, I think they would attract a similar type of applicant that your district would. So depending on how their trajectory lines up, I think that you would be in competition for, with them, as far as for applicants, because you're on a pretty, you know, they're in the process of collecting, so they issued a formal RFP for search firms, which is due next week. So I anticipate them selecting a search firm next week, and then they'll start rolling with that search, and so their search and your search could definitely come into... Now, geographically, they're not anywhere near you, they're a suburb of Grand Rapids, you're a suburb of Detroit, but aesthetically, I think that there's a lot of similarities between the two districts in which you would have similar pools of applicants. So if someone's looking to move into Michigan to be a superintendent, those are two very attractive opportunities, right now, for sure.
That's my only question right now. Wait. Trustee Fowler?
Just sort of a follow-up.
Yeah.
And when we say recruiting out of state, you know, like, I think Megan used an excellent term, headhunting.
Yeah.
So, and you're saying you do Google searches, are you not going to, the traditional headhunter is where people may not be looking, you know, but would be a good fit based on our profile?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. So, yeah, in fact, I can remember when I was doing the Lansing search, you know, again, you know, Capital City, big district, 10,000, they ended up hiring somebody that was non-traditional to them, because it was somebody from New York City, who at the time was teaching at a teachers' college, and was teaching administrators at a teachers' college, had been a high school principal before, but that is an individual that I had seen some news flashes on, and I just, you know, reached out to them directly and said, hey, you know, I've seen you've been doing some stuff, you know, we've got an opportunity here in Michigan, would that be something that you'd be interested in? I'd encourage you to take a look. And so I keep track of what's happening out there. I keep track of, my LinkedIn feed is just full of all kinds of presentations from people, and when I see somebody that I think, you know, would be an attractive candidate for any of the jobs that I'm searching for, then I reach out to them directly and encourage them to apply, for sure.
I guess my last question, I said, is done. So what's your, what is your impression of the current talent pool and the depth of it in the state of Michigan right now?
Yeah. So, you know, I'm cautiously optimistic. We're currently doing the search in Mount Clemens, you know, so that's a district of about 835 students. We got 31 applicants for that, for that position, which is fantastic. And I'd say of those 31, I'd cautiously say at least half, if not three-quarters of them are what I would consider to be viable candidates. You'll get candidates that, when you look at their materials, you'll be thinking to yourself, what in the world thinks that you're ready to be the next superintendent of Bloomfield Hills? I mean, you'll just, you'll see some of those applicants, they're just, they're grasping at straws. They're out there. I've seen them many times. But a vast majority of those applicants, of those 31 applicants for Mount Clemens, I would consider to be, you know, a good match. I would anticipate that for your district. I don't want to put a number on it, because then you'll hold me to it. But I would anticipate a sizable number of applicants for this position, and I think that a good majority of them will be, you know, viable, will meet the criteria that you say you're looking for. The biggest thing right now is that it has been my experience that those superintendents and deputy supes and building principals, if they're happy where they are right now, they're happy where they are right now. And so we're not seeing a lot of movement. This hasn't been a very active search season.